Okay, we want to welcome everybody to the monthly McDowell County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's good to see everyone here tonight in your boardroom. This is your boardroom where you're commissioners, so we're here to serve y'all. And we'll begin, as always, with the opening prayer, and then we'll have the pledge. So Commissioners, if you listen to prayer tonight and I'll do the pledge. Everybody, stand in place.
Well, we come to you with everything that's on our hearts. We ask that you be with our families, with our friends, with our coworkers, with our local government, with our national government. We've got so many things on our hearts that we need to turn over to you. We just ask that you give us the guidance in how we handle each individual situation that's pleasing to you. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Okay. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks very much. You may be seated. Okay, this time, Board, we have the minutes, and you see those. What's the pleasure, Board, concerning the minutes as presented?
Make a motion that we accept the minutes and please the closed session as presented.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, last time. Thank you. Let's go to the agenda. Are there any additions or additions to tonight's agenda by Commissioners and/or staff? There being, what's the pleasure, Board, concerning the agenda?
Set as presented.
Okay, second, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, last time. Okay, first item on our appointment schedule tonight, we have Jason Hallifield here. We can see he's our Public Transit Director doing an outstanding job, excellent job, and he's got his staff here, and we've heard all kinds of good things about the work that the staff's doing, and we have some award winners with us tonight. So Jason, the floor is yours, sir. Come on in.
I'd like to give you some statistics from last year. In a little small McDowell County here, last year, our Transit Department provided almost 24,000 trips, and we drove right at 200,000 miles. I'd like to point out that is without accident or major incident and with very few complaints. We have an absolutely outstanding group of drivers for us. You know, and if you think about the weather, for example, it was a monsoon today. They're right there in that. They're helping people, loading wheelchairs, assisting passengers. They're out if it's 15 degrees and ice or 105 degrees and sun. So I'm very proud of all that they're doing. I'm very proud of all that they do daily for the citizens of the county. And that's a very substantial thing. You know, you think about that many miles being driven, that many passengers being transported from place to place without incident, and as I said, without very few complaints. That's a very significant thing. These guys are very dedicated, and I'm proud of them and what they do on a daily basis. And you know, as far as what we do financially, administratively, I mean, we're not going to do anything if we don't have a good group of drivers. So I want to acknowledge that. I'm very proud of them, very pleased with what they do on a daily basis. I'll just read their names alphabetically. If you guys don't mind the stand. Steve Broski, Jeff Davis, Randy Freeman, Flo Leaverman, she's not here, Kathy McKinney, Alicia Morgan, and Bob Owen, he's not here, Brandy Robinson, Derek Siler, Becky Walker, she's not here, and Frank Wilkerson. So this is the staff. These are the guys that do a great job. These are the guys that are out there on a daily basis, you know, exposed to COVID, flu, you name it, dealing with sometimes difficult situations, tricky situations, but always there, always there at 5:30 in the morning whenever they're called to be there to do a good job. So I'm very proud of these guys. You guys can be seated. Thank you. And back in June, we had our, I believe it's the fifth annual Regional rodeo. It's the second time McDowell's been. This was held this year in Madison County, consists of five counties and about 80 drivers. We have a lot of our required training is taken care of in that rodeo as far as van evacuation, bloodborne pathogens. There's a road course. It's a big deal. It's a lot of work, and a lot of people put in a lot of time to make that happen. Well, this year, I'm happy to say that McDowell County drivers ended up with, out of 80 drivers, first and second place. I think that's very significant, considering especially it was only our second year there. And I'd like to recognize, first place was Frank Wilkerson, and second place was Steve Broski.
Jason, can we get pictures of you and your entire staff?
Yeah.
Jason, we'll come with your tattoos on. But we do want to say to the Board that hats off to everybody, but guys, y'all did great. I had eight drivers, second year, and just fading in, and y'all brought home the, I say it's gold. I see gold, I see some gold in there. So, thank you. So y'all get right here, so then get your picture. Mike, we'll get a picture of them. Let's get y'all. Get y'all in here, right. Frank, your bear, always be behind y'all. Listen, Jason, did I take it back here? Your director.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. There we go.
Y'all keep a better head, that's wonderful. All those hours driving, there were incidences and little complaints, that's more than going forward. Hoping for...
Can you lower the traffic a little bit? Thank you. All right, one, two, three.
All right. Yeah. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Hey, Jason, continue on. Anything else, please?
Yes, the second item would be our 5311 administrative funding total amount this year is $183,649, and the local share of the assets, 20%, would be $36,729.86.
Okay.
Do you require a hearing from the public here at this point?
Okay, this time, we'll declare the Board in a public hearing setting to receive comment on the county getting $186,000 and only having to match $36,000 to get $186. Starting this side, anybody wish to speak, just stand up. Front row, second row, third row, fourth row. Attorneys always have to talk, bring them something up. Okay, next. We never went inside, which is Jason. Okay, I do hear a motion of public hearing.
Go, make a motion to have a public hearing.
Discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye, okay. What's the pleasure, Board, concerning the Transit funding request?
Like to do it as presented and match that.
Okay, motion, second, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, last time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
And I would just like to point out, the reason we don't have a capital request this year, the vans that are on the way, that has already been dealt with and with prior funding, so when we get those hopefully in August or September, we will finally have the vehicles that we're supposed to have. Nothing is due for replacement at this point, as far as, that's the reason we don't have a capital request this year. Nothing admits useful life.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Jason, you're doing outstanding job. The Board appreciates you and your staff.
Thank you very much.
Go home, get some stuff. Okay, now this time, let's move to the next item on our agenda for tonight, on our appointment schedule, and we get to recognize one of our community partners, one of our employers. This company's been here, they're celebrating their 40th anniversary this year, Columbia Forest Products. So we are so glad and excited to have representatives here tonight from Columbia Forest Products, and y'all come up so we can recognize you, and the floor will be yours, and I know we're so excited to have you here, and thank you for your investment in our community and the jobs you provide daily.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much for having us. My name is Randy Marsh. I'm the plant manager at the Old Ford facility. This is our HR manager, Danielle Stillwell. And once again, thank you for having us tonight and helping us celebrate what's a big milestone for not only our Old Ford facility, but our company in general. Forty years of service to our community and our customers, and providing jobs for all of our employees, not only jobs, but careers as well. So a little bit about Columbia Forest Products, just in case some folks may not know that. We have been around since 1982 at the Old Ford Mill, longer than that as a company that started in Planet Falls, Oregon back in 1972. But we are the largest decorative hardwood plywood manufacturer in North America. We produce millions of panels across both the United States and Canada to a wide variety of customers that we're also very thankful to have as well. Our headquarters is in Greensboro, North Carolina, and we have 11 other, well, including us, we have 11 mills across the United States and Canada. We have about 2,200 total employees across all of those locations, 350 of which works at the Old Ford facility. So we've been a very stable part of this community for a very long time, and we hope to see what the next 40 years looks like as well. So on behalf of myself, Danielle, our CEO Greg Prey, and the 2,200 employees across all of our mills, we thank you for the recognition and celebrating this milestone for us. Thank you very much.
I do want to say, Randy, now, we do, the Board's got something to take care of here in a second, but I do want to say that if anybody in this room has been down to the Universal Skills Training Center and been in that big room right there, Chuck Abernathy, get on him, y'all see him in public, ask him about this tonight. But now, when that building was being constructed, Stacey, you probably remember some of this too, the discussion was to just have block walls in there and paint them white, and me and Randy Hallifield were touring that building at that time, Randy was Commissioner, and we said, Chuck, this supposed to be a showplace. You're going to be bringing companies in here trying to recruit, and can we not do better than that? And guess who stepped up to the plate? This company right here. They donated the cherry decorative hardwood, whatever the terminology is.
Plywood, yep.
Plywood, there you go. Plywood, for that room. So when you're in that room, when I go in that room, I think of you guys and your donation to make that building look as attractive as it could possibly look, and y'all did that, and so thanks. But the Board has a proclamation in honor of our partner right here, and the Board is big on recruiting new industries, but even bigger is retaining the current industries we have here. Recruiting and retaining what we've got is very important to the Board. So we've got a proclamation, and I'll ask Commissioner Allison, he will read this proclamation, and then the Board will vote on it, and we will present this. Chris, can you read this?
Proclamation in honor of the 40th anniversary of Columbia Forest Products. Whereas Columbia Forest Products was founded in 1957 and is North America's leading manufacturer of hardwood plywood and hardwood veneer products, which are used to create high-quality cabinetry, fine furniture, architectural millwork, and commercial fixtures. And whereas Columbia Forest Products built the hardwood plywood manufacturing plant in Old Ford, North Carolina 40 years ago, and whereas Columbia Forest Products' purpose statement is to significantly serve our customers, employee, owners, and their families, our communities, and natural resources. And whereas Columbia Forest Products is an employee-owned company with a strong commitment to their employees. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the McDowell County Board of Commissioners express their congratulations and strongest appreciation to Columbia Forest Products and their employees for celebrating 40 years as America's leading decorative plywood manufacturer. The McDowell County Board of Commissioners further proclaim September 1st, 2022 as Columbia Forest Products Day.
Okay, do you hear a motion concerning the proclamation?
So moved.
Okay, all right, now, let's start. Commissioner Vaughn, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, last time. Now, Commissioner Vaughn, the floor is yours, sir.
Well, I had the opportunity to go through their plant, what, just several, several, well, I guess a couple of months from my back, the lead group, and I was totally amazed. We walked up to this machine, they dropped in this big log, and in just seconds, it is a little sheep going across. It was absolutely amazing, and they were so good about letting us see all of it. They didn't have anything they held back. They let us walk through all of it, and what that company also does for our students and for the colleges, they donate a lot of things. Your company is amazing for McDowell County, and we appreciate everything you do for us.
Thank you very much.
Brendan, I'd just like to say thank you for the employment. 350 jobs, and it's been strong for years. It's just amazing because of the tax base that helps this county out. Also, as mentioned, the stuff that you guys donate, it is tremendous of, it doesn't matter if it's going to schools or whomever, but you are such a community leader in that way. But 350 households is truly amazing, and as a county, as receiving that tax money in, it's a huge thing, and it's very appreciated. Thank you.
As already been said, 350 jobs, that's incredible. That's only 350, that's families as well. Just thank you for your commitment and dedication to our county and providing that, that work for us and that career for our citizens. We appreciate it.
Okay, y'all, thank you so much. On behalf of Board, our chairman, I do want to mention, Tony's not here tonight, he has an aunt that fell and broke her leg in multiple spots, so he's not here, but I know he would say also, thanks for what you've done and you'll continue to do. And wow, Greensboro, can't miss that, the headquarters in North Carolina, Greensboro. Hats off, you're doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, so keep checking this. That's man of heart. Stacy, anything you want to add, because you, you know...
You're the, as, you know, I'm here on behalf of the Chamber as the chair for the Board for the Chamber, but also on behalf of McDowell Tech. Man, what a partnership we have with them. They are absolutely great to work with in everything we do, and like you were talking about, if you walk into the front of our universal advanced manufacturing, you don't miss Columbia Forest, because they're all over the place as soon as you walk in. And as Brenda said, when you go over there and you watch a tree become plywood, that's absolutely amazing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all skin Columbia, Carolina.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. As y'all can see, when we go down, there's no interest right here, so Commissioner Ellis has the longest one paid Commissioner's badge spot, so duly noted. Give you the time, make your circle. All right, let's move on to the next item on the appointment schedule, and this is the introduction of our new Public Services Director. Mr. Wood, sir, lead us off. Introduce.
So two months ago, you had the honor of recognizing the outgoing Director being Terry DeBoister. Terry was with us for close to 30 years and did a tremendous job for us, of course. And so that left a big hole in our leadership for our Public Services Department, which to remind everyone that is mostly our solid base, our public water supply system, as well as a few of those things like a garage. And so we embarked on a search, and we had a lot of good candidates, mostly all from this community, and we were very lucky to find and fortunate to find our new Director. His name is Dwayne Riddle, and Dwayne, if you want to come on up, Dwayne has most recently been with the City of Marion, and so we got a good one from the city, so we appreciate our city partners, but I hope they don't mind too much, but Dwayne's first day was today, so it's been, I'm sure, a fun day for him to get around and see staff. Maybe you haven't heard of a few complaints or two.
Well, I'd say this, he's still here, so.
From seven o'clock to five, so he comes highly recommended, and I think he'll do a great job for us, so.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to meeting everyone. I know there's a lot of challenges that we face in the workforce, and like I told the guys this morning, we'll all together work through these challenges, take them head-on, and try to, you know, keep in mind that the taxpayers who are here to ultimately serve, and you know, I think Mayor Ashley, uh, Mayor, Manager Ashley put together a good team, and I, from what I've met so far this morning, they've all seemed to be really meshed together, and I really look forward to working with each and every one of them and with the Commissioners here, and like I told them too, not only the challenges, but I look forward to all the accomplishments and achievements that I think that we're going to see here with the county. I think we've got a great team from what I see so far, and we, I think, you know, we can help improve and bring value to everyone. So I'm glad to be here. I've got 15 years' experience in local government. I've been from the town of Mooresville for seven years, worked in Asheville here recently with the City of Marion, and really look forward to hopefully having a final home as I age out here, you know, and have years of service to brand the McDowell County, so I really look forward to serving.
You got a story you want to share?
I'll tell it.
I was having some issues down at Marion Machine and got in touch with Bob Boyett. Bob got me to come down, and I will say that was nothing but professional, and the job got done much better than what my expectation was, and we look forward to your employment and growth with the county.
Right. Well, I expect my guys to deliver the same service to our taxpayers too, so, yeah.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Welcome, my friend.
Thank you.
We're glad you're here, and we look forward to great things coming from you and your department.
I believe you'll have those.
We need a picture, don't run off. It's picture night. We got to get another picture now, so.
As long as it's not mug shot.
No, no, we're not going to picture with the tax collector. We might get in trouble.
Kill my association. No, no, stay.
Thank you.
I heard you laugh out loud, man.
Thank you, sir.
One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, speaking of tax collectors, we have the best in the state with us tonight, Mr. Linda O'Nugrave. You're here tonight on business, so the floor is yours. Welcome to your board, man.
Well, thank you for having me. I am here to get my 2021, '22 tax year settlement approved, and as you received in your pockets, we finished off very well this year, again, beat last year's collection rate at 99.52% this year, with a balance at the end of the fiscal year, June 30, of 119,440. So, any questions about that?
Well, I would say you're quick. That if you're collecting 99.52% of what there is to collect, you're just doing a great job, you and your staff. I know your staff too, because you always brag with your staff, so you get your staff to know that this Board is highly appreciative of what you're doing. You're doing it professionally, and you're getting it done, and that's what I'm saying.
How's this compare to other counties in the state?
Well, that you ask that, I'm waiting on the report, but we should, we think from last year, we should be falling in the top 10, maybe even top 5 with this year, so we're staying in 15 out of 100 counties.
With that being said, can you make sure that all your employees understand we greatly appreciate the efforts and the work that they do?
I sure will. I sell them every day.
And it starts with the leadership, so.
It's employees. I tell you, I've got a great staff, and hopefully we'll continue, I can keep them, and keep them happy, and we just keep, you know, before I get out of here, I got to be in the top 5.
Okay, any other, Brenda, anything you, Chris, and Lynn?
I just appreciate everything you do, and the attitude that you have with it, it makes it a good job.
Okay, y'all, she's here for business, and let's go ahead and take action. She needs the tax settlement and order of collection approved. What's the pleasure, Board?
To accept it as presented.
So.
Okay, discussion, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed, last time.
In order of the collections for this year, you are in.
He's like you, he's quick.
I could go back to work, so.
Thank you so much, Linda.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, let's move to item A, our old business, this will be the animal services updates. Mr. Wood, sir, go right ahead and get set.
Thank you. Couple of items here. At the June meeting, you had on your agenda a discussion...
Okay, any other, Brenda, anything you personally have?
I just appreciate everything you do and the attitude that you have with it. Thank you. I'm gonna go.
Okay, y'all, she's here for business. And let's go ahead and take action. She needs the, the tax settlement and order of collection approval. What's the pleasure of the board?
To accept a 10%.
So.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like so. Okay?
In order of the collections for this year, you are in.
He's like you, he's quick.
I could go back to work, so.
Thank you so much, Linda.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, let's move to item A in our own business. This will be the Animal Services Updates. Mr. Wood, sir, go right ahead and get set.
Thank you. A couple of items here. At the June meeting, you, uh, had on your agenda a discussion, uh, of several items related to a review of our existing animal control orders. And so, um, those general topics, uh, that you sent to the Planning Board for review for the ordinance that's, I think from 2009, uh, included pet licensing, spay and neuter, uh, free roaming of animals. Uh, and so those were some hot topics you wanted the Planning Board to look into in relation to the Plan Board, uh, and the ordinance. So what has happened, uh, there's been a June and a July Planning Board meeting. They have been meeting with, uh, Representatives of the Sheriff's Office. They've been meeting for Representatives of Animal Services, which is, uh, the Shelter Staff. And, uh, there's been a lot of good discussion. There's been feedback from staff, uh, both Sheriff's Office and, uh, Animal Services. And, uh, good hearty discussion from what I understand. What you've got tonight is, uh, a request from the Planning Board that they've communicated to us that they don't feel like their charge included a wholesale look at the ordinance. But looking at some of the discussion points, it feels like that maybe that needs to happen. Not throwing the whole document out, but some of the feedback was maybe some of the things in the existing ordinance are ill-defined. And so having a little bit more authority, because they don't want to go outside of the parameters you've granted, to be able to look at some of those things, uh, the entire ordinance to bring back to you and say, okay, this is what we as a board, Planning Board, decided to bring back to you based on input, uh, of staff and others. So that's one. They'd like just that authority to be able to look at the entire ordinance instead of just narrow areas.
Okay?
That's okay.
We'll cut in a motion.
Yes, sir.
We'd like to make a motion, uh, to give Planning Board the authority.
Okay. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, like so. Okay?
Okay, the other item, uh, it's been longer than June. It was, I believe, back in January where we had the last discussion of the actual facility on the agenda. Uh, you'll recall, that's when our Animal Services Director, Brittany Wright, gave an update on some activities. And one of the things that she talked about was existing shelter, which was built around 1980. Uh, we do as best as we can with a 40-plus-year-old facility to keep it, uh, meeting state standards. We had a visit, uh, last week that was fair for, uh, for our shelter. Uh, there's always a little bit of something, like a paint or something, that needs to be addressed. Uh, and so since that time, we have been speaking, uh, with the architect, also with the state, to understand, uh, what could be done with our existing building. Can you add on to it and still meet the needs, uh, of our county for hopefully a long time? Uh, so we're working on the drawings, um, with this architect. Uh, in the meantime, the state has asked that Ms. Wright and I go see another shelter, I believe in Stokes County, to see a shelter that's been built within the last two years that meets some updated standards that we would need to meet for any renovation or addition to our facility. So, don't have drawings, don't have cost estimates, any of that yet, but it's still in process. But wanted to give you an update on where we stand with that right now. So, I continue to work on it and we'll go, go on that visit, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, to see what the state would like us to do. Again, that, we're regulated by, uh, Department of Aquaculture, uh, and they come about orderly. They can do surprise visits and all sorts of things, but we score very well, uh, considering we have a 42-year-old shelter. So, no action on that tonight, but I did want to update everyone where we stand.
Is there, um, there are other counties with older buildings than what we have?
There are a few still.
And, uh, is there a concern from the state that, uh, that we need to update, uh, very soon?
They know, uh, everyone here knows that we operate at capacity. We, we operate what's called managed intake. And so we purposely do not utilize, uh, on a whole-scale level like we probably did years and years ago. And so there is a concern with the state that running at capacity, that creates other challenges to where we can't bring in as many, uh, surrendered animals as we would like. So it does require more cooperation with our community partners and a little more effort, a lot more effort on our staff's part. So the state has not, they don't have the ability, from what we can tell, to demand that we build a new facility, not like it was a jail. They could do that if we had to. They're saying that we don't, but, uh, they strongly are encouraging us to go in that direction because of the age.
With the, with the expansion though, because you've got an architect that's currently working on drawings to expand the current facility, would that be sufficient to the state?
That's what we're trying to find out. So, uh, we've heard some mixed messages, whether addition versus replacement, uh, is preferred. And our preference would be addition.
Preferred versus mandatory.
Right, right. So the preferred, if at all possible, is expand because, you know, that's going to be a more affordable option, of course, for the taxpayers.
We have donors too, correct?
We do have, there are some conversations happening with, uh, private donors that have expressed an interest in helping. And so, once we get to the point, uh, where you would authorize a capital campaign, that would be a point where, much like the, uh, emergency services headquarters, where we, we do a donor campaign where, you know, you could, you know, name a room or a wing or have a, you know, what have you named for donations, so.
And the expansion, uh, would require more labor, uh, or manpower, uh, to keep the larger or upgrade, uh, running?
Potentially, uh, we are required to have, uh, one employee per 10 animals in a facility. So, we, we have three full-time staff and one part-time now. About eight years ago, we had one full-time employee. So you have invested in that operation over the years to increase the standard of care. Uh, while we've not been able to expand the facility, the standard of care is much greater. So, we're pretty close to what the recommendation is now. But if you got too big, you would definitely have to have too much bigger than our staff.
At this time, we're not aware of any extra monies anywhere from the state that would be assisting us?
No, sir, not at this point. There's always, uh, the ability to approach legislative delegation for appropriations, but there's not state grants that would go towards capital facility.
One thing we need to note too, is the partnerships with the different animal, uh, rights groups, the Mercy Group, and these other groups, they're doing a tremendous job in helping to meet that.
We could not do it without them. And I say that with all sincerity, we could not. So, uh, we need to, and we do have a great relationship, we need to maintain it. Um, and so we're really proud of the staff and the relationship they maintain, as well as what you do with them as well. But we'll continue to have those conversations with the state and hopefully in the next couple of months have something more concrete, next with Maggie.
Okay, building projects, item B in our own business. Mr. Wood, go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. As Mr. Riddle talked about, uh, we've got a lot going on. We have, uh, wrapped up some capital projects and, um, and there's always more, more to come. Don't believe it was the second Monday meeting, it might have been the third Monday meeting, maybe three or four months ago, uh, where you authorized, uh, an examination of the DSS building, buildings, um, and perhaps have an architect look at some options there. And I have had a conversation with at least one architect, uh, and really didn't get anywhere with it, just to be honest. And so, um, looking at what some other counties have done with their DSS especially, because it is governed so much by federal and state requirements, there are administrative codes that require, uh, certain, uh, space needs being met. There are building code requirements, obviously. I would, I'm not aware that we ever did something like this. I'd like to ask, do we do something that we typically call a space needs analysis? There are firms, there are architecture firms to do it, there are others that do it, uh, that will look at the code, administrative code, look at the building code, look at our existing footprint, our existing staff, and anticipate staffing over, you know, 30, 40-year period, and then come back and say, this is what you need. Because I'm afraid if we don't have a really good look at it, we might be, uh, start off on the wrong foot. So I don't know how much one would cost. Uh, I didn't want to go down that road to get those estimates yet without, uh, at least getting some authority to look into it first.
So those DSS employees, you mentioned the, uh, the special unique situation that we're in with the, with the state and, and the federal requirements that come down to. My question would be, is, uh, I'm offered, I'm, I'm okay with the study, but I'm, I'm definitely okay with asking the state to pay for the study?
Sure. That I don't know, uh, but we meet again next week, uh, for, more or less, DSS focus meeting and try to have an answer back before you mind, if that's okay?
Come with questions.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to make any solid decisions.
I'll look, I'll contact them tomorrow.
Okay. Services building, Mr. Wood?
Ms. O'Nugrave went back to work, but, um, I think last Thursday, uh, Mr. Silver and I walked through, uh, the Services Building with an architect. And most everyone was busy doing their jobs as we were walking through. And I said, I didn't want to interrupt him and say, hi, this is, you know, an architect. Uh, he's looking at the building. And so after, when, you know, someone called and said, who's this gentleman coming through the building with you? And said, well, he's an architect, didn't want to interrupt your work, but. So, uh, we have put an RFQ, uh, firm, uh, named CBSA, which is based out of Hickory. Uh, comes highly recommended from, uh, several, uh, similar projects, especially Alexander County, that are fairly recent project with, uh, uh, they, they took a tour of the building, uh, with the idea that, uh, you have directed some time ago now that probation parole, uh, being looked at for going into the second floor of that building. And so we have state money that has been identified, uh, last year's state budget for renovation. And since it's over a certain level, we had to have an architect award and couldn't just contract out. So, um, I don't have a contract yet. He has to look at, uh, the building footprint and work on a scope. And so I've mentioned to you some, uh, communications that he, uh, would bring back, you know, various phases that can be done based on budget. So, as we continue to work on scope, probably next month, I'll make another contract. So no action here, just like. I'll just keep going. The Station 1 Old EMS, uh, based on Garden Street. Uh, again, really glad Mr. Riddle is here. His staff, uh, new staff have been doing a great job in the meantime, for the last month and a half or so. Uh, but we need his leadership here in, uh, Paper Ford. So one of the first things he will be doing is leading the, uh, the bidding for the demolition of that building, uh, which leads into the next item. Uh, we are meeting with, uh, the engineer who is going to do our, uh, pavement assessment and pavement plan. Uh, the first thing that is on their list starting tomorrow is getting the, the documents together for paving of the new parking lot that's across from Station 1. So that'll be paved within the next couple of months. And they're also going to design the parking lot that's left after Station 1 is gone. So then they'll, in the meantime, they'll be working on their assessment of our other parking lots. So, again, the end product on that is a report that can go to Mr. Riddle and says, uh, these are your worst locks, you need to focus on these. This is what you need to do, you need to dig out, you know, put down a new base and start over, perhaps. So, no action, but we'll bring back, probably have bids ready next month, uh, but we'll hopefully have the bidding out next month on definitely both of those. So no action, uh, tonight on any of them.
Okay. Let's move to item C, under our own business, water system projects. Mr. Wood, please say, sorry.
Again, another Mr. Riddle item, so he's getting, uh, a lot on his plate to start off, but we're here to work as a team. So, uh, Mr. Silver and I have had a lot of discussions with our water system expansion, Phase 1, which I'll leave off a road, just, um, jack forking them a gypsy, studying acres on some pine, Bedwood Drive, NC 126. I think I got them all. Uh, the engineer's working, uh, through the permitting phase of that now, so that involves NC DOT, that involves NC DEQ, and the railroad. So there is a railroad crossing that will have to be addressed one way or another. So, they're in the, the midst of that. Phase 2, which we're, uh, we'd call coming back towards Marion, Nevo West, perhaps. We've got some early, uh, concepts on, on what that might look like. And so talk a little bit about that, Mr. Riddle, today. So that's, uh, next, on the Nevo section. Mentioned in the email to you that, uh, I'll give Mr. Silver, uh, 100% of the credit. He did 99% of the work on the grant for, uh, the ARC grant. That was, uh, will, uh, will be positive about it. Serve about six businesses around the exit 90 interchange. So years ago, we went down to, uh, around the Sells, uh, grading business. What this would do would extend down Burma Road East and, uh, go down to Boyd Road to on some properties being developed there. So we'll probably know in, uh, four or five months, we've been awarded that. Feel really good about that one. We're meeting tomorrow with the engineering firm, Wethers Ravinal, that you authorized a month or two ago, uh, for a water study around West Marion Elementary. So, uh, that will be kicked off officially tomorrow. They've been doing some research in the meantime. So that's, uh, going to be underway. Uh, and I've mentioned also, uh, formally tonight, uh, the Hobby Time Hollow Road Water Grant was approved by the state, uh, several weeks ago. So that, uh, notification will be coming our way. And that's another project adding to the list. So, uh, lots for, uh, staff to be working on, but, uh, we're very, uh, very glad to do it. And, uh, don't have it on the list, but we work, are working on, uh, some initial grant study for, uh, some additional areas for a water grant, the same water grant that Hobby Time funded, that's due September 30th. So I hope to talk about that next month and get authorized to apply next month. So, while the money is there, we want to try to bring it home.
Well, we'll provide, we'll be providing the need with the extension of water lines to, to the affected areas. And we'll be developing our customer base too, uh, which state, as we all know, is leaning on us pretty heavily about.
That's right.
All right, let's move to item D, under our own business, trail projects updates.
A lot going on here too. So, um, we do sleep every once in a while. So there are a couple of trail items. Most of it is fauna flora related, uh, which again, to remind folks, is a state trail that, uh, when it is built, will go from the Buncon County line to the Burton County line. There are existing segments already in the county, so Point Lookout Trail that the county helped facilitate back in, um, the late aughts, I guess they would say. That's part of it, the River Greenway, but our section, the city section is part of it, uh, as well as Copperhead Bridge, uh, west of Wolfport. We're working to add a couple more sections. The biggest part for us that's taking, uh, a lot of our effort, again, especially Mr. Silver's. A common theme here tonight, uh, we call it EV 5916 or, uh, the River Greenway Extension. So this is NC DOT funded at an 80% level. The county's doing 20%. Our goal there is to extend from existing Greenleaf Park towards Tom Johnson's Camping Center, Camping World, and also back east, back towards the, the original Greenway section we can get there. So we have an engineer, you've approved that, uh, the companies, they make Adams, they're working on the survey now. We have a schedule. You see a little bit on some of your attachments. It'll take a very long time to get to bidding. It's just the way these things go. There's environmental process, federal money, just get what, you know, get ready to sit back and, you know, take your time on it. So, it'll be about six months before. So it'll be about six months before the environmental part is done and then they look at the right of way that needs to be acquired, if any. And that takes about six or nine months and then maybe we'll be close enough to bidding for construction. So this one will take some time. The next item that is in process is the Old Ford Trailhead. This is on the former Arrowhead property near the Ford, Old Ford. The county is the, is a funding partner. You're providing a hundred thousand dollars towards that project out of a total, total project of about six hundred thousand, about three hundred thousand state funds. Understand from the Friends of Hana Flora State Trail and the town, that construction will start later this year, bidding will start, I believe, in late September. We are again just a funding partner. We offer support morally and otherwise to the town whenever necessary, but they are contracting with a destination by design for a lot of the property we own this, so there's support. There is a discussion about getting into that property, so there is an easement over the Ford property. There's a really narrow road that needs to be improved and so there's discussions now between the town, the TDA, probably the county at some point that might be here with a request to help out improving that access. So that was not, for some reason, in the original scope, I just think because they didn't have the funds to go around. And so there'll probably be a discussion of that at a future meeting, so just wanted to give you sort of heads up on that. And so we're looking at whatever grants might be available for that project. Minimizing the impact here. Black Bear, I'll move quick here. This is the Duke Energy Project where they're building a campground, day use area near the Black Bear Boat Launch. The county will lease it for probably about thirty years. I want to lease, hopefully, I've promised that, hopefully by next month. Project should be done at the end of calendar year and then they'll hand the keys over to us, be our responsibility for upkeep and maintenance. Much like the shooting range, if there's a major capital item, Duke will come back and help, but day to day stuff will be our responsibility. So we'll be running a campground at that point. Briefly, Wilderness Gateway State Trail, this is a state trail being built along the South Mountain Range, southern part of the county. We're going to help facilitate a meeting in October with stakeholders for that project, including Fiddle's Conservancy as well as the State Park System. Want you to know more about that as it develops. And then the Old Ford Gateway Trails, those, that trailhead opened a couple of months ago, or month and a half ago. You approved last month an additional grant for that where we would just be a pass through and that was submitted several weeks ago. So you do have a request out of all these updates from the Friends of Hana Flora State Trail that I've mentioned. They are asking for every local government from Buncon County, including Asheville, all the way to Morganton and Burton County to support them financially. You previously supported them financially at a twenty thousand dollar level. So they've submitted a request for funding for this fiscal year. There is funding in the budget set aside for trail initiatives, probably this in mind, so if you would like to.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? Comments, questions?
I'll make a motion for the twenty thousand to want the Florida, Florida State Trail to come off the trail initiative line.
Okay, got a motion, second. Second discussion?
Yep, and we do have that in the budget.
Yes, sir.
That amount, okay.
Further discussion? All in favor of the item? Aye, opposed, last time. Okay, all right. Let's move to new business, item A. This would be administrative hours. Mr. Wood, please, sir.
You only have one this month and it's EMS write offs totaling seventy-six thousand dollars. A lot of that, but. Any questions?
How is the third party working out for us?
They are operating at a little bit higher collection rate than we were doing internally. It is more than enough to offset what we are paying on administrative fee. And what I can do is have a report run to look at their collections. There'll be a little bit of, you know, things change and rates change, but just to see where we would be tracking. I can bring that next one.
Okay. Other comments, questions? It's pleasure of the board.
Next question, approve.
Okay. Second discussion? All in favor of the item? Aye, opposed, last time. It's good item B, this would be the cell tower easement request, Mr. Wood, please, sir.
Thank you. And like the game show, might phone a friend if necessary. Mr. Harmon is here, our deputy manager for community development. We need, need his assistance. So Verizon Wireless is thankfully scouring the county for additional tower sites. I think they recognize the need that their service in certain places is lacking. And so one area they have identified that would help out on this southern portion of Marion especially is, they call it a burden drive location, but it is right across the mill from the Ag Barn and it's right adjacent to county property. We have an over one hundred acre tract that wraps all the way from the transfer station all the way back towards the Ag Barn. And this proposed tower location is closer to the Ag Barn than the transfer station. This tower site is located on private property or adjacent property there, so they don't need our permission to be on that property except for our ordinance, but they do need our, your permission due to what is called a fall zone that our ordinance requires. And so if you look at, look at this page sixty-one, there's a dark semi circle area that is county property. This easement that they're requesting would be on the county property on that mill. So if you have technically oriented questions, Mr. Harmon definitely will be able to help out. So there was a question earlier posed to me, can we charge for this easement? You know, what are some of the caveats to it? You're giving up the ability to use that property so that if you wanted to ask for some compensation, I think that would be a fair thing to do upfront if you wanted to do, wanted to do that.
I think we need to do that upfront, find out what it is, because if it's on private property, they are making financial adjustments with the property ownership. So I think we need to ask that question.
Yeah, I'm one hundred percent in favor of finding how much you're going to pay the county for that easement, because if you look at their agreement in section, I think section two, number four, this is going to be a perpetual easement that can be transferred if Verizon, the person, we can say the name of him.
It's Verizon, yes, sir.
Verizon sells it. And to receive nothing, as Patrick said, for an easement on county owned property. And then they have the right to perpetually use that property for, for the fall zone and taxpayers receive nothing in return. Whereas, you know, I've got, I, people all the time have tell me how much their sale is going to be with Verizon. And so I think it's just fitting that the board, and it's probably expected, that they probably know we're going to ask for a monetary advancement on the easement. I'm sure that all the lawyers they have, they know that's probably going to be requested. But now, tell me though, Commissioner Allison, I was telling him earlier.
Yeah, it needs to be paid not when it's constructed. We need to get paid upfront, the county does. Because a lot of the agreements that the cell phone companies go through, Mr. Harmon can obviously have too this conversation, but a lot of times in these agreements that they have with individuals on private property, they do not receive their first payment from the cell phone company until it's constructed and in operation. So there's been several, when I was serving on the planning board, we probably approved about six cell towers throughout the county, three of which, maybe four have been built, which means people's property in this county, two or three individual private owners can't even use that part of their property and they're not getting a dime out of it. So we do not want to end up in that same situation.
Wrong with the, I told you, sir. And add to what Chris said. Because I didn't know that, last time him earlier, I thought, that's a firm deal.
What we've heard from others in the business is cell companies will go through and pick the best spots where they think a tower is going to be beneficial and they'll go and lease the property. And the property owner will sign it without reading the fine print that says you won't receive your first payment until the tower's constructed and in use. And we've approved three so far that I'm aware of where the tower hasn't gone up, but as Mr. Allison stated, the property is encumbered.
How old are those three roughly, just roughly?
Eight years, six, eight years.
Six, eight years. Because, you know, I had a friend of mine state that a provider had approached him about his track of land and he was all excited, saying, if I do this, I'll get fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month, a check. And so to hear this today, that no check coming until it's constructed and talking to Chairman Brown today about it, sounds like they're trying to lock up, as you said, the land so another, so competition can't get that way at a future date.
Just for the people of the county, if you have someone approach you like that, they can reach out to Mr. Harmon, there's the name of the individual that he can give them that will help them and assist them through that situation.
Just, just for your knowledge, the fall zones are now engineered where the tower typically will fall down within twenty or thirty feet of itself. So ours requires a circle for those fall zones, so that's why they're asking for a lease. It'll probably never be used, but again, like you say, that property's now encumbered and can never be used for anything else, so compensation would be greatly.
Expected.
Yes.
Okay, comments, questions? Okay, direction, emotion, anything for board members?
Nobody made a motion for that?
I think, I think it would hurt, wouldn't hurt to put in a motion that you would like staff to negotiate and come back with an offer for easement. Talk to this through Mr. Coates, either, both of myself.
How many have a motion?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor of the item? Aye, opposed, last time. Okay.
Thank you, Rowan.
Thanks for your answer. It's good item C, indoor business ordinance updates, Mr. Wood, please, sir.
I'm going to give this item credit to Ms. Mitchell. She gives credit for the whole package, but we're passing out thanks tonight. She has been going through our ordinances with Mr. Harmon, with myself, and on her own as well, and with her training and for the school of government has noted that a couple of our ordinances need some attention. And so what we're asking for tonight is, we're presenting these, is essentially its first readings. And if something comes about through fourth or review over the next month, that can be changed, but like to ask for these to be maybe deferred to next month for approval. But what we've got is our state emergency declaration ordinance, our hazardous fee ordinance. Those are really two that Mr. Keller has looked at and has recommended some changes that are forthcoming. One item, talk about Mr. Riddle a lot, a water distribution ordinance. We do not have one on record. When we implemented a system, it appears that that was the intention back in two thousand and five, never did. We've been operating essentially on grandfathered in or whatever, the city's ordinance. And so we need to have our own. And so what we've got in here, again, is our current practice, it just needs to be put in our own name and not the city's for that ordinance. So no, no action requests to dial on those. I did also have a note on here that Mr. Walker asked to be able to discuss the noise ordinance. Maybe add some action on that.
Sure. I got, I was approached by someone who is just outside the city limits, their neighbor goes out and shoots semi automatic weapons, fires off twenty or thirty rounds at eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, you know, late night hours. And when the Sheriff's Department responds, they're saying they're target shooting. But now, you know, unless you've got that equipment on your firearms, you're target shooting at eleven, twelve, one o'clock. And our current ordinance goes to eleven during the week and weekend is twelve. So I saw it be good to have by our planning board, look at that noise ordinance to see what water, if any changes they would recommend back to the board.
Yes, I think we need to do that, we need to do that in motion, I make that motion.
Have a motion to have.
One member check into that.
Okay. Second, my question, Ron. Discussion, all in favor of say aye? Aye, opposed, last time. Okay, thank you. Let's go to item D, new business, this would be tax matters, Mr. Wood, please, sir, please, sir.
You have your releases, refunds and so forth that are pretty typical. If you ever see these and have a question about a particular account, let me know and I can talk to Ms. Ann Gray about it.
Okay, it was pleasure of the board.
Second one is presented.
Okay, motion? Second discussion, all in favor of say aye? Aye, opposed, last time. It's good item D, board appointments, and we do have a second reading for the library board trustees. They have two vacancies, only one application been received, so if anybody in the room or is watching tonight's commission meeting would like to serve on the library board as a trustee, see our clerk and she'll be glad to get you an application. But, so we need to take action on the one, correct, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board? You've got the information in the packet. This is Rowan Bishop, she's the museum director down at Mountain Gateway Museum, does an excellent job. It's pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept. Second, all in favor of say aye? Aye, opposed, last time. Okay. Let's go to item F, New York County Association, county commissioners, legislative goals process, Mr. Wood, please, sir, please say.
Yes, the association, which is your advocacy group on behalf of you and all the other ninety-nine other counties, is asking for any legislative goals that you might have for the upcoming long session that starts in January. So the deadline is September twelfth, which I think is our next meeting, regular meeting. But if you have something that, I think they would take them a little bit late, you'd have to came at that point, but it comes to mind that you'd like to pass on, that typically like endorsement from the board, so you could do that either next week or, you know, twelfth.
Okay. So board members, you've heard of that. Have anything to submit to our director, county manager. Mr. Wood, at this time, let's go to citizen comment and do we have?
We have one person.
Okay, anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else sign that?
No, sir, that's all.
Okay. Reports and communications, staff, board members.
I do have something. Last month, it was brought to my attention that there was some department spending out of the county and I just wanted to refresh the procedures of what the county's wanting to do as far as if we have departments that have the authority to go out and get quotes and do things, it's my understanding, and just for clarity, it's eight hundred dollars. If it's more than that, then we have to go, have to make sure that you're directly involved with that. But we're also wanting to make sure that we're using people in the county, but we're going outside the county. So all I can, I'd like to ask is if staff could get with all the departments and then just bring that back to us next month to make sure that there is a clear understanding of that procedure.
Yes, sir. Bring it up tomorrow.
Do we know it? All right. Anything else?
Yes, you would like to mention on sales tax, if we have more than what's anticipated as far as budget, could, I ask, could it be brought to the monthly meetings to mention that, and I know it's probably going to be a one or two months behind, just so that we have an understanding of how much is going into the general fund for the additional amount or if it's shot. So just so we have a good understanding of the, of the money.
Sure. So what you get now? So what you get now, and we'll make sure we're getting what you want to see there. We get, it's about a two or three month lag on sales tax.
Correct.
And so had a conversation with the vice chairman today about that. We're, we're in our new year. We're in our second month of the new fiscal year, but we're still seeing reports from the prior year, and there's two months we won't, we don't have yet. And so you just don't know how you're going to end up with those two with the year, but we'll make sure.
And each of us have our own individual thing, but I'm kind of interested in seeing, making sure that the general fund is going into the general fund and it's, and it's there for decisions to be made in the future, so, so that we can, are fully aware of what that is.
Sure.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
Sorry.
Anything else, Pam?
No.
Okay. Make sure. No, that's very good. Two, two good things you brought up there. All right. With that being said, there are numerous adjournments.
So I'm going to.
Second.
Second discussion, all in favor of the item?
Aye.
Opposed, last time. All right. Many adjournments. Thanks everybody for coming tonight.